And we're going to have a call to order. We'd like to welcome our media, Corey McCarthy for Temple Star, no, for Channel 32, sorry. We do not have anybody for Temple Star today. We will ask Councilor Pivoy to give us an opening prayer, please.
Father in heaven, we are grateful to thee for all of the many blessings that we enjoy in this lovely, small section of Southern Alberta. We're grateful for thy guidance as we've completed a town planning session over the last weekend, and we're grateful for the responsibilities we have now to continue to implement those and continue the functions of council. We ask always for thy spirit to be with us, that we can conduct the affairs of this town according to thy desires. And we ask these things in the name of our son Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. We'd like to welcome a couple around to our chambers. It will be giving us a report just about now, if you saw it. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Worship. Okay, I would just, a few things I wanted to bring to your attention. You have before you the third and fourth quarter of what we call our annual report that are, came from our database called PROS, and it gives you a rundown through the whole year as to how Karstston had fared in compared to other years. I see that Mayor Cronin had provided council the 2011, 2012, 13. I'll address any questions that they have in regards to those comparisons, but overall, my observations and our work synopsis is that there's nothing too much out of play in regards to criminal activity or overall activity, whether provincial statutes or terminal statutes, that we noticed any concern for trends. There is a concern in regards to where we are actively addressing is gang activity, more so now than has been in previous years that have been here. It just seems to be taking on more of a structure, but not necessary the structure is of sound. Sound is the school itself. We have a committee in progress with the high school dealing with individuals that have that propensity to go towards a gang identity and perhaps take activities in gang affairs. So right now, I have Constable Aaron Penner, and Elizabeth Chan, and Doug Vaughn really participating in come up with ideas as to what can we do to distract or discourage this type of activity within the schools, which also leads off into our community. We also have a little concern of individuals who were moved into our area from Hobima, who's making the gang activity a little more of credence. I have to give kudos to Constable Doug Vaughn for outstanding work he has done from September up to present day in regards to these individuals who are no longer in our community. He's made successful arrests on Christmas Day on these individuals, and they're no longer operating in our community, and they're now going through judicial proceedings. This is just the start of a long term of things that we are trying to do to discourage this mentality amongst youth, and hopefully that we have something a little more in play that we can kind of be able to put our finger on, is that this is exactly what we're doing to defuse any persons that feel that they want to join up with any gangs. Again, these gangs are not anything of any concern in the sense of real violent crimes. They are people of individuals who mostly for petty crime to obtain money to buy drugs or other substance abuse, or sometimes they like to paint their name tags on our local buildings. I noticed that lately we have found a few more buildings with tags on it, but we also had located some very young kids doing that work as well. So we're not, pretty sure those young kids are not the new gangs, but the mentality still spills out into those young minds. So to that end, I submit our third or quarterly report, and I was, solicit any questions that councillors may have in regards to the statistics that we have in front of us.
Corporal Brown, the first thing that I would like to say, thank you for all you do in our community. I know our community is safe on our poll, but we also feel that there are some areas that need maybe for us more attention, and maybe they're all related to the activities that we have seen in our town that's not desirable. And that activity we've seen on the street, on Main Street essentially, and we are concerned about that vagrancy that may be related also to drug dealing on our streets, and that may be also related to petty crime that we have seen in our community at certain times. Now, I know that what you report represent how much work you have done in order to clean up the area of trouble, but I'm still trying to understand, for example, if you look at a trend, you say you don't see a trend, but here, a person offenses in 2001 were 62, 2012 82, 2013 96. So I look at it, and over 2011, to me that represents 55% increase. So I do not know if this is related to the drug issue, I suspect it is, but I do not know. And I do not know if the increase represent more focus from your unit on those type of issues, or if more people are coming forward and reporting that. I don't know how to read the statistics.
Yes. And it was to us, as is to you, in regards to just looking at the numbers per se, because the numbers don't actually spell out what is the activity behind those numbers. Again, I've been here since August of 2010, and the activity that I observe now doesn't seem to differentiate a whole lot to what we have, other than we've captured statistics on paper. The solution to this problem, and the downtown vagrancy, I have to say that we have been trying very due diligence in foot patrols, I myself, we have on our clipboard at the office, a foot patrol sheet of the members that do foot patrols, go downtown, and offer just to be there discouraging, but because of our due diligence in regards to foot patrols, a lot of times we're there picking up these individuals perhaps more readily, and that might have a little bit of factor in why there's an increase, because we're now, not necessarily now, but we're much more proactive in trying to get downtown as much as we can. Over the summer months, as you know, Your Worship, is that we've been down on human resources at our office by three members consistently, and then when you factor in members' holidays, I would make it four. That is something that we're trying to address with our staffing, to try and get our numbers back up in regards to our human resources. I've just spoke with them yesterday in this regard. We are getting a cadet to replace one of the gangs, and we're also waiting for the arrival of our new sergeant, supposed to come here, as well as a member from Redcliffe. What's holding up the sergeant, the member from Redcliffe, of course, they have to sell their home. As you probably are a bit aware, that I also too have been transferred to Northern Manitoba, and my transfer could be when I sell my home, or I relieve prior to sell my home. But that's not the issue here presently, and to address these numbers as to why these numbers gone from 62 to 96, again, there's a number of variables, but I'm pretty confident as being a member of the community and as a citizen of the community, I feel that things are not as what they appear to be on paper, but a lot of time, the thing we've got to keep in mind is the population from the reserve side does increase, while our population this side seems to be a bit decreased, therefore that might reflect the numbers a little bit in regards to vagrancy.
So are you trying to tell me then that the problem that we have is a reoccurring problem? It's a problem that has been there for quite a few years, and that we need to maybe look at the cause of the problem and find remedies? Maybe that is a way that the town needs to go, but we can't do it alone either.
Correct, Your Worship. With having Horton there helps a bit to, because he assisted us quite a bit this past summer, and he was very active with us. So that's part of the program of the town, I see, helping us to defer, to mitigate these type of offenses of town. Again, having Horton there also increased the stats, because he calls in and say, okay, I got so-and-so here, that's a stat that we address, we put it on. So that speaks volumes about his value as a member and his observation. He's our eyes and ears often, because we can't be down there 24/7. So I trust his due diligence, but anyways, that's one of many. But the school itself, like I said, we're active at the high school, I don't see any teachers here, but having these members in play now in regards to dealing with the perceived identification between two blood gangs, again, I say that, when I say that gang, it's loosely fitted, because it's not organized, but there is that potential there, because now we have two people who identify themselves by a name, and now we have some individuals from another community coming in trying to give it a little bit more structure. Again, those individuals are no longer in our community, and thank you for Constable Vaughn for his due diligence into ensuring that these guys are no longer part of our community, but they're still pending court proceedings too. I guess we can continue to monitor and be in close contact with council, with Miriam as to what you guys see as what we should be doing as a solution. I would embrace any solution that you think that might work, give it a try anyways. So we're willing to do that as well, if you want us to sit down with any members of the county here, or sit down to hack out any, yeah, solutions to what we perceive to be a lot of vagrancy.
Yeah. We, as a council of angry, I will give you a chance in a minute, if you don't mind. We, as a council, have had a retreat, and really want to focus on vagrancy, on reducing that for town, to make our town more attractive. And we also want to have a safe and secure community, which it is, but there is always place for improvement.
For sure. I'm only act correct, Mrs.
And we want to see that in a residential and on a commercial. Now, I know that we also need to try to see what we can do. We were talking about finding a way to monitor what's going on on the street, and have different kind of program with cameras or whatever, and we're looking into that. That, in fact, we quite do.
Yeah, cameras are definitely a good deterrent. It's not, it has its limitations as well, due to environment, it's often the time that cameras capturing something.
Right. And the graffiti and gangs is definitely also on our radar, and I know that we have helped the school write a grant, hopefully, to try to garner some money and human resources toward that element, and we hope to be able to piggyback on their initiative. So those are really focuses, okay, we could say, that we have for the coming year.
If I could just put council at rest for just a little bit, please, in regards to the 2013 statistics, and you got 96 there in regards to crime, property offenses and stuff like that. This past summer was more active than most summers because of only a few individuals that were continuing causing us grief at late hours, early hours of the morning type of thing. Those individuals have been stopped, those individuals are no longer in the community, that's why we have been there. But during the summer months, we were having a lot of calls, a lot of it was vehicles left unlocked, or doors left unlocked, and again, these individuals didn't break in, but if something was available for them, and of course, if you get five in one night, they didn't get caught, then they continued until they got caught. And the COPs had helped us to put a damper on this, because these same individuals, you know, after the village to the east side town, they decided to go to the west side town, and having the COPs out there, we were able to capture three people who had taken responsibility for some of these individuals, and of course, they encourage other people, and it takes a little while to catch up with those other people that had already been encouraged, but that those have been addressed too.
I mean, I'm impressed at the statistics, at what you were able to do with such a shortage in your manpower, and that is something that is also a concern to us all, and I'm glad that there's maybe some positive coming out of your call with human resources. I really hope that will be sooner than later. And I want to really recognize COP and Councilor Bantry for his group and the support they given you, and Horton also. There are elements there to help you.
Yeah, all come together, us, COPs, Horton. Again, like I said, the numbers don't speak the truth as to what the activity is. It's always a few that's making the numbers higher, and so we're not, I didn't want to go into hell in the handbasket for lack of a better phrase, but again, based on my experience here from 2010 to present day, I still think we're still in the norm of how things are. Yes, our downtown activity does increase from time to time, but overall, it hasn't changed a whole lot from my observations.
Thank you. Counsel, do you want to ask a question?
Corporal Brown, I think it's worthwhile that maybe you tell us what's involved in personal offenses, because there's a garment of things involved in that, and it, you know, it might show an increase, but the increase is in just one area. Is this not right?
Well, that's, it becomes part of those numbers there, but, and I thank you very much as councillor to, again, if you look at your ledger there that's provided there in regards to persons offenses, assault, assault is anything from pushing somebody, somebody bullying one another, domestics, ordering threats, so that kind of pushes the numbers up a bit in regards to crime against persons or persons offenses, if you're holding in on that one particular area.
Now, can you tell me something about the provincial minus traffic? Because provincial minus traffic has to do with child welfare, coroners are, gaming and liquor commission, mental health, trespass, criminal records, false alarm, national survey code, prisoner health, assistance of general public. So it's a very, very, very broad category.
Without traffic enforcement, so everything that under provincial statutes that we do, as you saw right there, and of course, we deal with a lot of the liquor act, we deal with a lot of child welfare, sometimes an issue, but not as great as perhaps is received. False alarms are another one that comes under that one. We get a lot of those, a lot of 911 hangups that comes under that category. So that itself, like when we pick up an individual downtown for liberation, for incarceration, there's just two scores that come into that one person. One is public mischief, the other one is electric patrol act. So therefore, we get kind of two scores for one person type of thing. So again, statistics is captured, but it doesn't speak volumes of what is the activity behind the statistics.
Yeah. I just saw that in 2011 was 676, in 2013 is almost double.
Yeah, okay, so what happened there, what happened there is that when we finally had a second public servant, now we're back to one, the prisoners that were coming from the reserve wasn't getting, we weren't getting credit for it prior to this. So that was one of my projects to demonstrate how busy we are to capture that into our PRO system. So that kind of sent the bar up a little bit, because a lot of times, they're left at our office, and we have to deal with them now. We have to deal with them as monitoring them. Sometimes they take seizures, sometimes they just cause problems within. So prior to that, we weren't capturing it into our PRO system, and then when we finally had two people, I said, I gave them a project, I said, I want to make sure that people understand how much, how much work we're doing here. Now that we lost that person, that work is in queue waiting for our new PS, by name, he's Jeff Shaw, by the way, not the one that we know here.
So you don't.
No, it's just.
Yeah.
So he's, he's, he's been on his way, surely, but that's what, that's how that reads right there, too, I think. It makes you wonder, how come?
Yeah. We're just trying to understand, because on paper, it looks really big numbers, and so we need to understand as well what's going on in the community. Counselor Vaughn?
Yeah, I asked this question at our planning meeting, I'm going to throw it up here again. Would it be of value if Horton's time was increased a little bit, maybe a little to part-time through the winter months or something like that? Would that, would that be a help to deter the problem on the street with vagrancy?
I can't say yes to that, or hard to no. He really is there at the pinnacle time where everybody's there. The weather helps a lot, helps us, so it may be more of a help in that sense. His mission ends like in August, is it, Mary?
September.
Yeah, sorry, October, I meant to say October, I didn't say August. I don't know what to say to that. October is one of those months that it could be cold, October could be warm, but as the global warming, it seems like October's more, a little more warmer than normal. If I had given any advice, I would extend at least by one month, so that were to the first of November instead of the end of October.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, I had just a couple of questions related to your initial comments on the, on the gang activity. The first question was, is there also kind of a rivalry between the gangs? Is that part of the, part of the activities as well, or?
That's definite on that. There is that animosity between the two of them, that they got two identifications, and therefore, that spills out in regards graffiti, one trying to overdoes the other in regards to graffiti we see in town, and it spreads down to the little tigers, who takes up the baton from the larger people. And therefore, that's why we are very concerned about the school itself. There is individuals who have participated in gang-related activity, and they want a venue to get out and to find themselves under this here, under this here rules they have with themselves, if they can't get out and they end up doing things they ought not to be doing. So, yeah, is a rivalry, that's real. There is always potential, and that's why we want to nip him in the bud. We're at the kind of very beginning stages of mitigating this, or trying to get their energies looking elsewhere, and we have, actually today, if I can mention this, we have two RCP members from Hobima who addressed the problem at the Kineide School, where two of our members have gone there today to glean any information that they may get from these guys, with how they're dealing with the gang activity in Hobima. So again, this is further information that we just got today, that which we pass down to our members to these schools, and hopefully we work together in a conservative effort.
Yeah, well, it was kind of my other question, is, do you work with like the Blood Tribe Police, and do they cooperate well with, or is it, or is that part of their jurisdiction?
Yeah, we work as well as we can, because we don't have open channel communication sense, so lots of times, I have no idea what's going across the street unless they call and ask us to help them out. So we have that camaraderie, you know, we help them out when they ask us to help them out, and we even ourselves, trying to make intervention or prevention by making patrols to reserve ourselves, because what's on reserve, it'll roll down into our community. So, yeah, we have that good rapport camaraderie, but we lack that open communication, because they have a different database than we do, they have different radio channels, so we're not able to monitor a whole lot, other than what they tell us, and it would be nice if we could have an open channel there, but that's something else that we need to work out together, as two agencies working together to stem this here tide here.
Yeah, I was just going to open it up to you, is there, in your own opinion, is there anything that we can be doing as a council, as a town, to help you guys?
There's only one thing that I feel that the town needs to be proactive in due diligence, again, is when those tags come on the buildings, they need to be addressed right away. It just encourages for someone else to come by and do big and better to everything. So while she painted, the town needs to take, get the message out to proprietors, guys that you don't, deal with this now, because there's been studies already, I think I showed it to Miriam when we first got here, is that unless you deal with that tagging right away, it just, it keeps on going, it just keeps on going. So it needs, that part needs to be addressed right away.
Thank you. Counselor Edman?
Is there a nationwide shortage of RCP officers at present time?
I was asked that question yesterday at the county meeting, and I can't say there's a nationwide, there seems to be a bit of shortage in Alberta right now, because my hierarchy has told me so, is because my communication with other detachments where they're short too, we're trying to get people in. There seems to be, we're at that kind of a wave where the retirement people are moving out, and we're trying to fill in the gaps. So we're at that point now in our, in our organization to fill the spaces that are leaving very quickly now. It's not just our agencies, but Edmonton City and Calgary have the same experience, and there's a bit of a brain drain there, I can use that, lack of a phrase, but we don't have the resources coming in as fast as we'd like to have them.
Counselor, Corporal Brown, maybe you could explain to us, how big is a detachment when it is fully, fully staffed?
When it's fully staffed, we have two PSs and nine regimandos, that's counting the, that is counting the sergeant and the corporal. Old Sergeant Beeler, before he left, is asked to get another member, but that has not got any, any attention from those who are supposed to give us. So it looks like it's going to be still status quo. I worked here when we had a full house, and it works great. We're not stressed out and trying to get to be everywhere at one time type of thing. But, so when you look at the numbers, and when you think about, we used to be 32. Now, geographically, we don't do reserve, but as reserve gets increased more in population, you know, that trickles down to our abilities to meet that demand. So to me, I think we're as close as thin we can get. I, it would be my, it will be my suggestion for council, or even county council, to ask for more members to be at. ask for more members to be at, to care for the detachment, based on what's happening. And, yeah, the overall totality of what's happening, gang activity. And when we're down in numbers in the way we are now, when we're small as it is, it hurts quite a bit when you lose three members and it's not filled right away. So if we had extra number of people, that would kind of help out meet that wave of activity that's out there that, that me and the community needs. So, yeah, I would encourage the council to pursue that in regards to getting more human resources.
Thank you very much for all you did for us. I know your time is short with us. Do you have an exit date, or do you know?
My exit date is, well, I got two scenarios. One is that I wait till my house sells, or I can leave before that, because I'm going to Forest Housing, I'm going to Gillan, Manitoba, which is just a short distance below Churchill. So my wife and I are tossing up as to what do we do? Does she stay behind and look after the house while I go up there? If I do that, that does, does a bit of a headache here. But again, my superior is aware of that action, and hopefully that they will have something in play by then. I did speak with the new sergeants coming here, again, and I spoke with him just a few minutes before I came here, and he has, there's no prospect of someone's house at this moment right now. Wintertime, even myself, it would be, it would be a miracle to sell a house in Kerstin in the middle of winter, but I believe in miracles too. Because we just experienced one with the summertime and my parents are trying to deal with all the operational needs with the small, small amount of people that we have, or the smaller of the human resources, as you said.
Well, thank you very much for your report and for your comprehensive explanation. And we look...
And again, we are open to any suggestions that, to meet with, with you folks at a different committee if you want to address some certain issues, but it, or even councils wanting to come on their own. I know Richard is at our office anyways, but nevertheless, if somebody wants to share their thoughts and come up with a solution, we'll entertain them and put it on the board as to, is this viable, can it work?
Okay, because there are some ideas that I had that we had spoken in the past and...
Yeah, and that's a long-term one, and there are people at play that wants to see that happen too, so...
Maybe we can have a further discussion on that topic.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Mayor Cronin, I'd like to take this time to, to say in front of the council how much I appreciate working with Corporal Brown with the COP program, because he is adamant that we have a COP program in this town, it's visual, and it's working, and I appreciate that.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, appreciate that.
Thank you.
All the best to you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, we need to adopt the agenda. Now, there are two additions. Under seven C, there's policy C22, and that is free communication. And under correspondence, we have 11C, Alberta Order of Excellence. All right? So without addition, we need a motion to adopt the agenda. Counselor P. Boyd is moving to adopt. All in favor? Thank you. We need to adopt the meeting, the minutes of the December 10th regular council meeting.
There needs to be a change on the Brown League and Reddington Friends should be...
You took my window. We already noticed that.
Okay.
And administration has made a change, so we need to, the January 13th needs to read February 13th. And so we need to adopt the meeting as amended. So Counselor Edmond moved to adopt the minutes of the regular council meeting of December the 10th, 2013, as amended. All in favor? Thank you. Any questions? No, signal, let's continue. We had a public hearing, it was bylaw 1606, electricity distribution bylaw, and we had a public hearing on December 10th, 2013. So we need to have a motion put forward. Okay, Counselor Creed puts a motion forward to adopt the meeting of the public hearing. All in favor? Okay, it's adopted. Thank you. All right, so business arising, let's go to seven, request for decision. Out of the CCW, there was a recommendation to have a policy for flags, a flag policy as we know it now, policy F40. So I need a motion to adopt that policy. Counselor Bantry put forward a motion. All in favor? Thank you, any questions? Signal, it's adopted. Thank you. Seven B, it's a little bit of a technicality. I know that we normally don't approve third reading of a bylaw, but in this case, let me explain to you what happened. We had adopted third reading for the bylaw 1620, which was a mill rate that was adopted the 14th of May, 2013. We, in error, also adopted bylaw 1620, which was with management, and it was adopted the 9th of July, 2013. As you can see, we cannot have two policies with the same number. Therefore, the bylaw 1622, Marion, could, do you want to read this bylaw and draw three? Unless you understand what it is, is, is a technicality, we need to change one of the bylaws and give it, give it a different number. Any questions? Counselor Bantry?
Mayor Cronin, do we need to have a, a motion to make that change, or can we just instruct our, our administration to make the change?
It's a little bit more complex than that. What I'm going to do, I'm going to do, I'm going to call to allow first reading on bylaw 1622. We're going to go through the proper motions of calling for, to allow. We're going to do that twice. Twice, we will have a motion. Okay.
Sorry.
Marion may, may correct me. Okay, go for it.
Just for clarification, we will call for first reading, call for second reading, call to allow third reading, and then call for third reading.
Right. Yes, that's what...
Yeah, you don't allow first and second, you just call for the...
Oh, sorry, just for...
All, all on this bylaw, which is simply to give permission to renumber the other bylaw?
Yes. It's a very complex, is directed by the MGA, and it has to be followed to the letter. Okay, so, call for first reading?
I'll move first reading on bylaw 1622.
Okay, so Counselor Edmond, call to allow, so now we need to have a motion?
Yeah, the law, each motion.
So let's vote on that call for first reading. All in favor? Thank you. So now we need a motion to adopt. We don't need, we don't need that. Okay, all right, got it, got it, I'm a little slow, but I got it. Okay, call for second reading?
Okay, I'll move for second reading.
Okay, Counselor Creed moved for second reading, so we need to vote on that. All in favor? Thank you. Now, I need to call to allow...
I'll make a motion to allow for third reading.
Okay, so that's a call to allow for third reading. All in favor?
This has to be unanimous.
Okay, we all, and so now we need to motion to adopt...
Third reading.
Third reading.
Now we need a motion for...
Motion for third reading. Counselor Barnes? And all in favor? Okay, so that is done. So complicated, I'll get used to that complicated matter.
So now 1622 is officially 1622.
Sixty...
And 1620 stands alone.
Sixteen twenty-three.
Yeah, sixteen twenty-three.
So we have 1620, 1622 to correct, 1623 is the other bylaw.
Okay.
Okay, and my concern was, does 1621 does exist, and we made sure that it does exist, so we're okay. All right, so that's taken care of. All right, policy seven C, did you all get a copy of that council letter to citizens policy?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to give you a minute or so to, to look through it. This has been drafted in order to help us all know what to do when it's offered to do a report for the citizen. So have a look at it then. How are we doing? We're doing okay? Any questions regarding this policy? This is to help us with the deadlines, so that we, we know how to respect the deadlines. It's always complicated, we're busy. So this is just to help us know when to do, what we have to do.
Have, have any of the letters gone out yet? Has there been any newsletters posted?
The only one that was posted was mine.
Yeah, okay. All right.
Okay, fair enough?
Yep.
Okay, so we just need to have a motion to approve this policy C22. Counselor Edmond is putting forward a motion to approve policy C22. All in favor? Thank you. So adopted. Counselor Bantry, did you vote on this? I did not, sorry. Okay. All right, a financial report is there for your information. Administration will not give us a, a report at the, for December 30th until we have all the final...
Financial statement.
Financial statement. So it'll be a little bit later on. Marion, when do you see that happening?
Probably not until March.
Okay, so that's going to take a little bit of time. Noel is at this time compiling all the year-end kind of entries, and it's going to take a little while to get all that for the projects.
Just need a motion to approve.
Yeah. We need a motion to approve the financial statement as given. Who wants to do that? Counselor P. Boyd? Thank you. All in favor? Do we have any questions for administration regarding this statement? No?
Uh, just, no.
All right. So we voted, did we vote to approve? Okay, so we fine, thank you. So here you have committees and other reports, you have the town council motion list. The bylaw animal control report for December 13th, as you can see, it's a little bit more visual than you have received it, and next time you'll get in color, it'll be even better. What you can see, you can see that our peace officer is really busy looking after stray animals in our town. Between a cat and dog, 48% of his workload has to do with opening files and dealing with stray animals, which is about half of his time is dealt with that, which is a lot. So when people in town say, well, we don't see the peace officer here or there, well, you can show them where he's busy and what he's busy with. Any questions?
No, the top indicates that he is on the committee for, with the high school, and I'm assuming helping with the gang-related issues that Corporal Brown talked to us about.
Yes.
And I'm wondering if it would be nice at some point, maybe at a committee of the whole meeting, to actually have our bylaw officer come and give us a report on that.
Okay, administration can make a note of that, that's a good point.
And just a question on this, there's a reference here that there was a week of this month taken off. What happens during that week with these issues, like does someone pick up that responsibility?
Well, that is an interesting thing. Normally, when there is no peace officer looking after that, I know, I know that Public Works does look after the animal and the shelter for the animals.
But what we try to do, Counselor, is we will have all the animals out of the pound before he leaves, and then if there's an emergency issue, like a bite or something like that, then we will send other staff to deal with that. On a routine complaint, we have to just take the complaint and deal with it the way we can.
Okay.
Thank you, Professor Creed.
And also, we are seeing people help us if we need in those circumstances. Dale?
Can I just go back to the motion list, or there?
Yes.
I didn't see anything on there that we've been registered for that horse training.
Oh, because that was on the previous month to do, and so it was completed and done. So once it's completed and it's been reported once, we take it off the list.
Okay.
Yeah, I usually have the meeting, the two previous meetings, if they're completed, then I...
Okay.
Okay.
Question on the, on the motion list, since we're back there, because I had a question that I was looking, in December, we made a motion, we sent a letter to the minister regarding MSI funding, and I just, I'm assuming that letter was sent?
Yes, it said that it was, it says completed.
Well, I guess my question was, did we get any reply?
No, yeah, we will bring the reply back to council.
Okay.
So no, we haven't got anything.
Now, nine C is the report from Norman Carr regarding the development report for the fourth quarter. And as you can see, altogether, for the new housing start, there was an increase of $2,545,000 in, for the project value. I asked Marion what this represented, what does it represent in projected tax revenues? It's about $20,000, but that $20,000 was also taken into consideration in the budget that we passed, okay? When you look at commercial buildings, you kind of wonder what is 1.180 million. You have to remember that part of that was a school, the school is listed as, the school renovation is listed as commercial building at this time.
For the, for the school up on the hill there and over here?
Yeah, the elementary school.
Up on the elementary, around here.
Okay. So that might help you understand a little bit.
Don't get taxed as from them.
Okay. Any, any other information, Counselor?
Just for clarification, yeah, we're just looking at these numbers, and I apologize, ma'am. The third quarter was the 1.1 million per commercial, that would be our pool.
Oh, that's a pool, okay, so that was...
So I'm sorry, I, I misinformed you.
The 14 million in 2012 was the school.
Was the school. The large amount on the right side of the thing. Okay, all right. So that's okay. No, we, we don't get revenue from none of this.
Maybe the school and the pool helps with taxes on the first one.
Okay, correspondence. Election Alberta did send... Election Alberta did send a request for the municipality to provide information regarding the different organizations that are under the town municipality umbrella regarding reporting of funds that might have been dispersed to support someone, a candidate or someone in a town, from a political point of view. Marion has filed a report, and I would imagine that report says that we have not supported anyone.
Well, yeah, just a reminder to those of you who sit on those committees, that it is illegal to contribute to a political party. So if you have those requests at that committee level, any committee you're associated with, it's not, it's outside of the law.
Okay.
So Marion, did you, on the report, all of the committees that we sit on are included in that, in those type of things that you had to report?
Correct, if we're associated with, as per the regulation, when we have representatives on the committee, or if they are, if those committees are controlled by the organization, by the town of Cardston, then they fall under that umbrella. Things like, well, all of our committees that are under the town's umbrella, as well as, like Chief Mount Solid Waste, Old Man River, those kind of organizations that we affiliate with as well.
The airport.
Airport committee.
Committee, every committee, so just keep in mind as we...
If a council member is represented on the committee, then you shouldn't be contributing from that committee funds to a political party.
Yeah, that includes Diamond Will of Terrace, because we represent that too.
Foundation as well, yeah.
Just a question, so, but as an individual, if you want to contribute, that's okay?
As a councillor, you can, but you can't use town funds.
Right. Yeah, it can't be committee funds.
Yeah, it's your private funds, that's different. Okay, we have been, Minister Senior Service Award, you have been given an application to nominate someone in the community to receive an award for excellence in service to the seniors. If you know of anybody, go ahead, use the form, and you can send it. Marion, would we send it through you, or how would you like us to do it?
If you're nominating anyone individually, then there's an address on the back that it can be sent to.
Okay, so this is your chance to think of someone in a community that does a lot for the seniors.
I couldn't read it on my SkyDrive, so can any individual send this in?
Yes. Yes, you may send it. If you need a copy, you can ask Jeff for a copy.
Just to verify your question, did you mean individual in the town or individual or council?
No.
Either. I mean, that's why I was wondering, who can send in that?
Anyone.
Anyone can...
And there's no limit to nominations within the town? So we could have fifty from Cardston?
Yes.
Increase our chances?
There are quite a few people in, there are quite a few people in our town that do a lot for the seniors, and I'm sure you can come up with an idea for people who can receive such an award.
So if anyone can submit this application, is there a way that we can notify the community that this is available? I won't.
Normally, the Alberta government will put out ads, letting the general public know that we are available.
I'm sure the seniors group must have received something with that too.
I couldn't speak to it, but because it's a provincial program.
Okay.
Would it be appropriate to, for us to announce from our Facebook page and say, hey?
I'm sorry?
I'm just asking, would it be appropriate to announce from our Facebook page and say, hey, do you know a senior that would deserve recognition?
You could.
Fill out this form, send it in. The more the merrier.
In fact, I'm wondering even, well, we have to decide, do we send it as a council or do we send it individually? That's something maybe it needs to be...
I'll have a copy of that form.
To be decided.
Noel, as you said, anyone can send it.
Yeah, I think individually, to my point of view, probably most, more chance to allow for people to express their wishes.
Should we then encourage, maybe, our administration to put that out there?
We can, we can put the, the problem is, when I look through this, I can't find any link, so...
Yeah, to send it.
Yeah, we can put down, say you can pick up, you know, a nomination form at the office, I guess, but there's no one...
We should be able to send this PDF though, right? Like, attach this to Facebook, and then they can print one themselves.
Okay? That's all right? Okay, the last item of correspondence is under eleven C, is the Alberta Order of Excellence. So you receive the copy on your desk, and if you could see, the chair for the Order of Excellence council is requesting for nominations. So there are conditions, that person needs to be a Canadian citizen, live in Alberta, and has have made a significant contribution provincially, nationally, or internationally. So if you know of such person, you can put a nomination for that person, but the deadline's February fifteenth. Okay?
Now, again, on this one, who could make that nomination? Any citizen, or does it need to come from council?
No, any citizen can make. The reason I put it as an addition to the agenda is I just got this from Gary Bickman's office this afternoon, but because there's a February fifteenth deadline, I just thought I should put it out there. But any person can make a nomination for the local council.
But you can see, it's not at a municipal level, so the provincial level, national or international level.
If you have suggestions, you could contact Mr. Bickman, his office, and maybe assist him in putting together a nomination. It might carry a little more weight, I don't know.
Okay? All right, I think we have done pretty well everything. We can go back to ten. If any of you have questions for administration, for clarifications on items that we have discussed this past month, it's a time. We might go on and have a motion to go in camera. Councilor Pivoy, we have a motion to go in camera. Thank you very much, and thank you. Are you reporting for, Alan, are you reporting for Temple Star?
No, I'm the Toronto Star, too.
We're becoming famous. So it's...